Let's see.
Well, where is Mr. Schaffner?
Lynn is going to be away when I gavel. Okay. Mike, we call roll, please.
Yes, Bob Smith.
Here.
Mandy Croft.
Here.
Lynn Miniger.
Here.
Delot.
Here.
And Jason is absent at this point, and I have not heard it. I text him, but I haven't heard anything from him.
Thank you.
We need another quorum.
This is a stated meeting of the Sydney City School Board for the purpose of conducting our business. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
No, I have none.
Hearing none, the agenda will stand as presented. Tiffany, do we have any public participation?
My knowledge, we do not.
Yes, Mr. Pyatt hasn't entered the waiting room. I'd say that he is not going to participate then.
Okay. The next section, we would normally have our reports and presentations. We have none this month, but I do want to let any of our bowlers know, if you happen to be listening, we have not forgotten you, and we are exceptionally proud of you, and when we can get back together, we want to recognize you. So with that, we'll move on to the treasures report. Mike?
Okay. On the first item is the minutes. I'd like to request a motion, sorry, request a motion to approve the minutes, financial reports, and the invoices paid.
I'll still move.
Linda?
I'll second.
Michelle?
You've, of course, got a copy, as normal. I'm, since we have a five-year forecast in us, I'm not going to spend time on the details. I'm going to kind of hit the summary on each, and then we'll move on if you're comfortable with that, or if you have any questions, feel free to ask. But, I mean, from what you'll see, revenue, right now, it's behind budget, but that's a timing issue, basically, completely. We have not received our homestead or rollback payments as of yet. So they're just, they're a little delayed. We'll get them in the month of May then. And once we have that, we'll be back on course. But even with that said, with that not being collected yet, we're still within one and a half percent of the budget. So nothing to be of any concern there. On the expenditure side, all the things we've been seeing, the trends are still following the same patterns in all the different areas. And overall, we are 364,000 more than what the budget, but even though that in itself is a big number, it's still basically right around 1% of our entire budget. So nothing unusual is going on from what we've been seeing over the last few months.
Two items. Number one, Jason is now present.
Yep.
I will.
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
And number two, any questions or discussion? Mike, will you proceed with the roll?
Okay, and apparently, within this, with Jason in, he won't be present for the first vote.
Okay.
Okay. Miniger.
Yes.
Lot.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Beth.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number two is a health services contract. I'd like to request a motion to approve a contract with the Sydney Shelby County Board of Health to provide health services for the 2020-2021 school year at a rate of $37 per hour.
Do I have a motion?
Is it the same rate as last year?
It is.
Do I have a motion?
So.
Mandy, second?
I'll second.
Michelle?
And yes, the rates, the contract's exactly the same as what we've had this year, and actually, for the last several years. The rates have not increased.
Any other questions? Mike, will you call roll, please?
Croft.
Yes.
Lot.
Yes.
Schaffner.
Yep.
Miniger.
Yes.
And Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries. I'm going to click vote yes for you, Jason.
Okay, I'm having a little trouble getting in, but I'm working on it.
That's fine. We can, we can manage this way. The next item is the five-year forecast. I'd like to request a motion to approve the five-year financial forecast as presented.
Do I have a motion?
I'll still move.
Linda?
Second.
Jason?
Okay. So this, at this point, kind of a little backwards, since you've already made the motion to accept it. In general, we have to submit a five-year forecast twice a year, October. Now, they change that now, November and May. So, but I think it's important, especially this period of time, that I spend some time and actually go through the forecast, some of the assumptions, and a few things that I think are really critical that we share publicly with what's going to be submitted in this forecast. So I am going to share my screen at this time. And can everybody see that okay?
No.
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 Hey. Tiffany, you have to stop sharing yours.
Now we can see it.
You can see it, okay.
Yes.
All righty. So this is the Sydney City Schools' five-year forecast. This covers fiscal years 2020, the current one that we are in, through fiscal year 2024. And with the current environment trying to pass levy this year, which we've had, obviously, one tried, it was not successful. And then to add in to the whole mix, the current coronavirus and the impact that that's having, you know, statewide. I thought it was important to kind of give a little history. And this is going to be at a very high level with our, it's a cash balance, revenues and expenditures, but really, the cash balance one is the one I want to focus on, the very first line. And so we're back here in the yellow. This was back at the timing of the last time we had a levy on the ballot for operating, and that we were able to successfully pass it. So at the end of 2009, our cash balance, basically, our cash on hand, or I've heard some people begin to even associate this, kind of like you've heard with the state of Ohio. The state has a rainy day fund. And so, you know, we've heard conversations about the governor, whether he's going to dip into the rainy day fund, or to what extent he will dip into the rainy day fund. Well, this, in essence, is our rainy day fund. It's those funds that we try to put away for emergencies to, you know, to cover costs for things that are in excess of what we anticipated. So back in 2009, our cash on hand at that time was just over $1.6 million. The key with that is that the timing of that is if, you remember, when we passed that, so this was 2009, which means it's second half county year 2008, first half county year 2009. So when we passed that levy, it was $4.7 million, but in that first year, you would only get half the collections. So basically, $2.3 million. Had we not passed the levy at that time, that $1.6 million carryover balance would have been a negative. So that's how closely we were running our cash balance to when we were able to get something passed. So these are then the years going forward. And if you remember, during that time, we had pay freezes, staff took reductions in pay and so forth. And you'll see as we go forward, there's some other things that happened on the revenue side that were unexpected, that, that also helped to build the cash balance to where we hit a peak in 2018 of a carryover balance of just over $20 million. But you can see since that time, last year, actually, in fiscal year 17 was the, was the top, and in fiscal year 18 was the first year in which we had expenses exceed revenues, and it began to go down. In fiscal 19, again, expenses exceeded revenues, it went down further. And the current year that we're in, 2020, you know, we are within two months of the end of the fiscal year, we're, we pretty well know where we're going to end up. We anticipated to go down even further from 19 to 16, too. And based on the current forecast, as you can see, it begins to trend down. And if, if we just, as you'll see, is if we just let things run out as they are now, by 2023, we're showing a negative balance. Now, remember, all of these numbers have nothing built into them. This is strictly history and to what we forecast up to this point. So here's kind of a graphical of that same information. So here in the beginning, you can see, this is, the blue is revenue, and the yellow is expenses. So this was the timing of when we passed that levy. And you can see where, from all this time up until the 2018, like we've seen, revenues have exceeded our expenses. But here's that line where it's crossing. The green represents that cash on hand, that rainy day fund, and we can see the trend that it's moving, you know, in the wrong direction, obviously. So what's changed? So for the first nine years, what we were looking at, so 2017, the year in which we reached our peak of our carryover balance, compared to back to 2009, when we started down the journey of, of having revenues greater than expenses. 2017 to 2009, property taxes in 2017, we were collecting 10%, almost 11% more in 17 than what we did in 2009. By 2017, the state revenue was almost 25% more in 2017 compared to what we were collecting in 2009. And total revenues overall were 14 and a half percent more in 2017 than we were collecting in 2009. Fast forward revenues between in the last four years. So what 2017 was collecting, and then what we were collecting in 2020. Property taxes comparatively were only 3% more four years later than what we were in 2017. State funding likewise, only 3% more over that four-year period than what we collected four years earlier. Total revenues, because there are other factors that are going in there, total revenues are only 1 and 1/4% more than what they were in 2017. Expenditures, 2017 to 2009, salaries and benefits were only 6 and 1/2% more in 2017 than what they were in 2017, or 2009, sorry. Purchase services, though, wow, look at that, almost 40% more in 2017 than what we were spending in 2009. Supplies, we did really well over that nine-year period of maintaining our supplies. That's, so that's teacher supplies, office supplies, custodial supplies, all those types of things. We were only spending 2.3% more in 2017 than what we were spending in 2009. Capital outlay, now this is a big number. If you look at this, 53% more. This is a managed number, and we've talked about that for years, that this is a managed number. And in this instance, all this is saying is that in 2017 was a year when we had money and things to do, and we spent more in 2017 than we did in 2009. But that has not been the trend over all the years. We basically budgeted about $450,000 per year in capital outlay. There were some years when we had some unusual things. There was one year, if you recall, we upgraded the technology infrastructure. That project in and of itself cost us $4 million, or $400,000. So while that's a big number, that's a managed number, and that one really isn't of a concern. And our other expenses, they were a little over 6% less in 2017 than what we spent in 2009. And so total expenses between 2017 to 2009 is we were only spending about 4 and 1/2% more overall between those two years. Fast forward to now, between 2017 and 2020, salaries and benefits are almost 18% more in 2020 than what they were in 2017. Here's a big number they pay attention to. 34% is the number that benefits are costing us more in 2020 than they cost us in 2017. Purchase services, while it's less than 37, they're still about 11 and 1/2% more in 2007, 2020 than what they were in 2017. Supplies, surprisingly, they're actually down. And there's something that's important to know about this, too. The supplies are down this year because Brooke was able to work a textbook adoption where it was basically online materials, and we only did math, a partial math this year, correct, Brooke? So we typically budget $200,000 for textbook adoptions. We didn't have to spend that this year. So we're almost 20% down on what we spent this year in supplies, and as due to the textbook adoption than we did in 2017. Capital outlay, 4% more. Other expenses are 15% more in 2020 than they were in 2017. So that overall expenses were almost 12 and 1/2% more in 2020 compared to 2017. So if you compare expenses and total revenues, you can tell what's driving that direction on our cash balance diminishing over the time. And it's, and based on this, if we change nothing, it will continue to go that direction. And then this is just a graphical representation of what our 2020 through 2024 cash balance looks like without including new operating money. All right, so we put the levy on the ballot. We're anticipating and hoping that it passes this year. If we are successful, okay, you see, this is obviously the same starting point. If we pass our levy over the course of the next four years, with what it will collect in 2024, we will still maintain a positive carryover balance. But the important thing to look at is that trend. All we've done is moved the line up. We haven't changed the direction of the line. So if we pass the levy and we do nothing, we still are trending towards the zero, and you push this out another year, and we'll be back at zero. So obviously.
So we're kind of flattening the curve, right?
Pardon me?
We're flattening the curve?
Yeah, we want to, we actually want to do more than flatten the curve. We want to invert the curve.
Got it, got it.
Okay, so the new developments. We know all the stuff that's going on in our district, from expenses changing, revenue flattening, all those things. We talk about every month, every year, as we go through and do the five-year forecasting. But what are the new developments? The new developments are obviously COVID-19 and the governor's stay-at-home order and other restrictions. The state has also announced that it projects that sales and income tax receipts will be 866.5 million below their estimates for the last quarter. Additionally, then, with that news, the state of Ohio announced its overall general revenue fund reductions totaling $775 million, which includes the $300 million in reductions, 3.72% of the education budget to the K-12 education. Further, the Ohio Department of Education then announced funding reductions for each public school. Our reduction for this year only is $646,286, or 3.3%, 6% of our state funding. And it will be deducted in May, the last payment of that May, and the la, and the two payments in June. So a third each of each of the payments.
And our fiscal year starts on July 1st.
Correct, yes, good point. New fiscal year starts July 1. And finally, the legislature has developed a formula, every new state funding, and it was based, that it would, it was, it was calculated so it equalized the loss based on a district's local capacity to raise funds, and what they determine as its wealth factor. And a wealth factor is, is in all the founding, funding formulas, so that's not something new. You know, they've, it's taking known quantities that they've been using and applied it to this. I will tell you, that's, that's good to know this, as we think forward in what next year looks like. Okay, so where do we go from here? Here are the forecast assumptions that I've used in the forecast that I'm presenting for approval tonight. On the revenue side, property tax revenues, the current property tax collections that we have now will remain flat. While we've seen some projects going on in the city, some significant things. I mean, you look at what's, you know, projected to go on at Cargill. Emerson's doing some changes, you know, doing some renovations down the road. Oh, what is the one that Aunt Millie's? You know, they've been doing, there's some things going on like that, but all of those have contained abatement. So we will see small increases based on that. But we don't have anything significant going on in the city that's going to impact revenue increases on the property tax side. So the current property taxes, I'm saying will remain relatively flat. In this forecast, I have included that the 7.3 mil emergency operating levy passes sometime this calendar year. Passing this year, collections would begin in January, after January of 2021, so the second half of fiscal year '21. State foundation funding, we're going to discuss that a little bit later. That's a little longer discussion. Property tax allocation, the hold harmless and all of the operating revenues. The property tax allocation, that's the homestead and rollback piece of property tax collections. So they're tied to whatever your, your property tax collections are doing. And so, and the hold harmless, we've been talking about that. That's related way back to when we had lots of personal property tax, and they phased that out. They no longer collected on that. For these revenues, I anticipate that they'll remain flat for the forecast, except for the hold harmless. And as we talked about, it's on a scheduled phase out by fiscal year 2022. Expenditures. So on the salaries, FY '21 is the last year of the current contract. There's already a 2 and 3/4% increase built into that. For fiscal years '22 through '24, and always hesitate about what direction to go with this, especially when they're ending here in the times that we are now. But at least for discussion purposes, for demonstration purposes, '22 through '24 have a 1% increase in those. Of course, that's, there's nothing set with that. There's negotiated, all kinds of things that have to go on, but you've got to put something in. I could put zero. Right now, I don't know that that's realistic to throw that out and start conversations that aren't necessary now. Just like, it's also not realistic to put 2 or 3% in there. So 1% is nothing more than the discussion item, if nothing else. Health insurance, for FY '20, we already know what's happened. In the high deductible plans, premium is 15%, and in the PPO plans, they increased 23%. Now, fortunately, we did hear from the EPC last week, and for fiscal year '21, excuse me, for 50 to 50, for fiscal year '21, they've already announced that the increase for all insurance plans is 7 and 1/2%. While I'm thrilled that it's only 7 and 1/2%, I'm disappointed from this aspect. We made all the changes in our health plans, because knowing from all we've heard, what we explored, moving to a high deductible will help keep your premiums down. So I was really anxious to see, since we're 50% high deductible, 50% PPO, a year later, what's that look like? You know, did we see the increases higher in the PPO than we did in the high deductible? Well, COVID threw a wrench in all that. So that they could get the premium raise out to all the districts in the consortium, the insurance committee decided that they would take one combined blended rate across all school districts for all plans, and that was going to be the amount. So they didn't look at experience, they didn't look at the different types of plans. None of that came into play, which came into play last year. And so they just gave a flat 7 and 1/2% increase for fiscal year '21. Great. I mean, 7 and 1/2%, you guys all know, that's a great rate, if that's all it is. And I had within 10% to start with, so that's a plus going forward to begin with. But because of the way they did it this year, I'm not comfortable with going 7 and 1/2% for the years following. And I'm maintaining my blended 10% rate for the years '22 through '24. Purchase services, just because of what I've seen for history, I see them still increasing at a clip of 6 and 1/2, 6 and 3/4% year over year. Supplies, in here I have maintained current spending levels. The thing we have to remember is, I believe we can maintain the spending levels that we're at. But Brooke and I have already discussed, we are going to eliminate the $200,000 textbook allocation amount in the budget for the near future. So basically, for what we're saying really is from, for '21 through the end of the forecast, we're reducing each of those years expenditures by $200,000. Capital outlay, instead of the typical $450,000 that I would budget into this item, I'm going to knock, at this point, $100,000 off of that each year. So it'll be $400,000 over the remaining forecast. So basically, what I'm saying is, we transfer an amount each year to the PI fund so that it's secured. We know that that's all it can go for. We're just going to have to manage that transfer, which is around $250,000 to $300,000 to that, plus the 350 that's in the general operating fund budget. You know, while $600,000 to $650,000 sounds like a lot in a district our size, that can go away in a hurry between, because that's, we're talking technology, maintenance of buildings and grounds, any equipment that we need, those kind of things. You can see how it can go pretty quick. And then finally, all other expenses, my anticipation is we will maintain current levels for all those items. Okay, foundation funding. What do we need to consider? And it's, it's been amazing, because, you know, we met last week, Tuesday, as a group, to kind of start discussing all the things that, as an administrative team, we've been discussing. And I've probably sat in at least two webinars since then, and there are so many theories, so many perspectives on how to go about this, and it seemed to change at times daily. But here's the direction I'm taking. Some of the four things I think we need to look at. But here's the direction I'm taking. Some of the four things I think we need to look at and consider going forward. Number one is, how long is this going to last? I mean, we're already starting to see easing of restriction to those types of things. They, the more restrictions that are lifted, the sooner we get back to more normal activities statewide, the better. That means that the underlying revenues that fund our foundation start to come back more quickly. Will the governor tap into the state's rainy day fund? Well, he's already discussed that he didn't want to tap into it this year because it's so early and there's so many unknowns. But he has made comments that he would look at using the rainy day fund at least next year, and depending on how deep into the year this went, possibly the year after. So that's to be seen. Obviously, some of these things, we're not going to know until after the first of the fiscal year to start with. Fun, finally, the next thing, and this is why I referred to earlier, and this is important when you start considering what level you consider for next year's reductions. The legislators have already established the methodology for reduction, for the reduction formula. And that's important, just from some of the conversations I've had and some of the things I've listened to. They've established that already. They're not going to change that. They'll stick with what that is, that what they use this year, they'll use the same methodology going into next year. And if you remember, the statewide reduction for education was a three point seven two percent impact to the state education budget. Ours at Sydney was three point three four, which means our local capacity and the local wealth factor caused our reduction to be a little less than what the average was. So that's, that's an important thing to remember. And another big thing to remember is that before all of this happened with the coronavirus, the underlying economy in Ohio has been good. And that's important to remember as we go forward because I did attend a webinar that said, had the coronavirus not occurred, the estimates for state income tax for April were actually trending, where they would have finished two hundred million above estimates, as opposed to the seven hundred million dollars behind estimates. So the underlying economy isn't good, and that's important to remember that the sooner we come out of this, people get back to work, and all the things that were good before, having a greater opportunity of coming back more quickly after, you know, after this is all done. So here are the assumptions I've been working on since we talked about last, and there's actually five potential. The first one, in the first column, is the same, is assuming the same reduction next year that we had in the last, for the last quarter of this fiscal year. So that's saying that during that three months, the state loss for, the state reduction for education was three hundred million dollars. That was six hundred and forty six thousand for Sydney, three point three four percent. So we could assume that the restrictions are easy more quickly. Here, this month, next month, things get worn back to normal as we go forward. And by the end of the first three months of the next fiscal year, we're not seeing any worse losses than they experienced in the last quarter of this year. The next one is, then we assume, okay, it goes longer. But we're saying it goes up four and a half months instead of the three. The impact of that would be nine hundred and sixty nine thousand reduction for Sydney. What if it goes even longer? What if it goes six months past? Now we're at two times losses, for us to be almost one point three million dollars. Even getting worst case, now it lasts seven months, seven and a half months. We're at two and a half times, one point six. And what I think would actually be catastrophic, honestly, and I put it in a gray and you'll know for in a minute why that is, three times the losses. At this last, it's nine months until we start to see any real kind of recovery, and we've got, in the state's reduction of the state, of the education budget, it's nine hundred million dollars. It'd be one point nine million dollars to Sydney. Now, in my honest opinion, you lop off the ends. I think it's going to be worse than what the, this quarter is of six hundred and forty six thousand, just because we're going to move back in so slowly. So I don't think that's realistic. But on the other hand, I also don't think at this point in time that we should forecast that the sky is falling. I think that would cause us to make decisions that aren't necessarily based on the best information because we have no reason to believe at this point in time that this is going to go out for nine months, and there's going to be a nine hundred million dollar reduction in education funding by this day. I think more likely is one of the three in the, in the middle. So for the forecast, here's kind of the graphical representation of, the blue is the let, the forecast with the levy passing. And then you have, the orange is the same, the gray is a one and a half loss, and the yellow is a two times the loss. Honestly, from everything I've sat in now and what I believe, I think the most prudent is to forecast the loss at two times our current rate. So almost one point three million dollars. What's that look like in our forecast? Now, remember, I guess one thing I do need to talk about, and that you will notice is absent from the forecast, we have not at this point forecast any of the reductions that we've been having discussions on, things we've been talking about. I think it's too early to put those out there. I think there's more discussion that needs to occur. I mean, we're acting on things that the aides in this meeting, and because basically, it's the timing is not good for that, we have to do action on aides in this month. If you don't do anything with aides at this point, come June first, everybody automatically gets renewed, is up for renewal. So we have to take some action at this point with at least part of it. And based on the facts that we know now, the most prudent action is to take the action that we currently have on the table. So this forecast does not include reductions of any kind other than the textbooks and the capital outlay. My plan is, this is the one we submit with what we believe our forecast looks like with the passage of the levy and the impact of the state reductions. This is the one we have to work from and make our decisions on with things going forward. And then as we come to what those are, we will update this and submit this publicly so that everybody knows what's going on. But I think right now, to just speculate on certain reductions, I don't think it'd be a good idea. I just, I think we're better off to wait till we have a solid plan and not have people speculating as to what these reductions mean. We know that we are looking for a, a target of three million dollars in reductions per year. But that's our target. Can we get to that? Well, that's yet to be seen. You know, we've had our early discussions. We believe it's possible at this point to get to somewhere between two point two and two point five. But there's still a lot of things that are up in the air, if you will, to know what that number is. So I'd rather not forecast something be held to that and then have to retract or redact or whatever you want to call it, backtrack on a number that we just threw out there. So at this time, this is the simplified version of what the forecast would look like. I did include one in the, in the board agenda, the blown forecast is out there. This is just a snippet of the accumulation. So you can see, and the important line to know is, our ending cash balance with the levy. So right now, if the levy passes, if you remember on that, we ended up, I think it was around the two million dollar carryover with the levy passing. If you factor in all of the reductions for the state funding based on two times the level in twenty one, and actually, I probably should have added one of the screen in there. I didn't have it fully coming back in twenty two. I said, if it's gone long enough that they reduce us one point, almost one point three in twenty one, we may not get it all back in twenty two. So I brought fifty percent of it back in that year. So what we're talking about is one point three in twenty one, six hundred and fifty or so-ish in twenty two, so close to two million over that two years. So if you look at this, our ending cash balance, in twenty one, we're going to be at fifteen eight with what the reduction is. And it begins, continues to trend down, that if we did nothing, and it does follow what I say, and the levy passed, we're still showing a negative amount in twenty twenty four. So we have a lot of work ahead of us, obviously. Some tough decisions, lots of conversations. So this is the forecast that I'm recommending that we submit to the Ohio Department of Ed by the end of May.
Are we allowed to look into or include federal monies that potentially are coming with that?
Yeah, there's the CARES money that's out there. We haven't actually received it yet. It could, I could apply it to this year, or I could apply it the next year. We should know by June first. I know they not, we're supposed to get. I'd really like to see it and have it in hand before I include it in our forecast. And actually, it's really not, the monies aren't included in the forecast. We'll see that on the reduction of expenditures.
Do we know how much it could be?
It's, it, right now, what they're telling us will be six hundred and fifty two thousand dollars change. A key part of that, though, is because it is tied to title funds, we are required by law to allocate a certain percentage of that to the non-public schools in our district. That's approximately seventy six thousand dollars. So we'll have six fifty two minus seventy six thousand to work with. Of course, at this time, it's a one-year number. So if it's, let's say it comes and we use it in fiscal year twenty one, you will see, well, we'll probably have a lot of things going on in twenty one, but if that was the only thing going on, you would be able to see an expenditure is a dip in that particular year because then the following year, all the things that were tied to that funding, would have to go back to general fund.
So that seventy six sum that has to go to the other districts, does that go to the Christian school in Lehman?
Goes to Sidney, Sidney Christian, Lehman, and Holy Angels.
Holy Angels.
And it's divided up for them differently. It's based on what they have submitted as their student, special ed population. So it ends up being like on a per pupil basis.
Now, can we only use the federal money for certain things?
Typically, it's pretty restrictive when they do something like this. Fortunately in this, they outlined a number of different things they could use it for, and then their last bullet point was basically all other expenses that are needed to properly operate the school district, including salaries and benefit. I mean, they opened it up with one last item, and that is always the case. Usually what you have with federal monies is they look at supplement or supplant. Supplanting meaning you use it for existing programs or expenditures, and that's typically not permitted. It's usually they want it to be a supplement where you're using it to start new programs, fund new programs, those types of things. And that's a lot of times very difficult for schools because that money's not forever. And when you start something new with those monies, it's many times difficult to get rid of it.
I thought it was amazing that a lot of the school districts going south were going to end up better off than they were. I mean, they were going to get two, three, four million dollars from that CARES.
Yeah, but you're talking like in like the south, southeastern Ohio, those types of, and see, and that's, that's what the state in their, when they do that calculation and they say they bake it on local capacity and wealth, is a lot of those types of schools are in mind that they don't have the capacity or the wealth to you know, to absorb that kind of thing. So, you know, some of those schools, really, really poor school districts, when you look at a per pupil, ours is like a hundred and seventy six dollars per pupil reduction. There were some schools that was low as like eighty four dollars per pupil. And that was based on the methodology that the legislature used to determine what your reduction was going to be. And that's why we're saying, we have no reason to believe that they would change that methodology going forward.
Any other questions about the forecast? Hearing none. Mike, will you proceed with Roll?
Well, get back to that.
And just to be clear, this is, the motion on the floor is to accept the forecast as presented.
Correct. Miniger?
Yes.
Goffner?
Yep.
Lot?
Yes.
Croft?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. And the last item on my agenda is the employment of our superintendent. Like to request a motion to reemploy Robert Humble, superintendent, on a two hundred and sixty day, five-year limited contract effective August first, twenty twenty one.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Bandy?
I'll second.
Linda? Any discussion? And just for the general public, we just went over the five-year forecast, and the recovery from this is going to be a multi-layered set of changes, right? We have to work on the revenue side, but we also have to work heavily on the expenses side. And so there's going to be a lot of changes that are going to happen over the next several years in the district. This is the board saying that Mr. Humble has done a good job for us, and we want him to be the person that carries us forward through this time of change. And we think it is important to have consistency and leadership in the district. Any other comments or questions? Mike, will you proceed with Roll?
Croft?
Yes.
Miniger?
Yes.
Lot?
Yes.
Roffner?
Yep.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And now we're on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, um, so some personnel items, I'd request a motion to accept the the personnel items as presented.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Michelle?
I'll second.
Linda? Any conversation? Mr. Humble, what we're doing with the aides is we're moving back to the older process. Do you want to elaborate on that at all?
Yeah, so I guess a few years ago, it was kind of standard practice that at the end of every school, non-renewed at the end of every year, and then we would determine what our needs are, and then recall or hire back the aides that we needed. And that's basically exactly what we're doing now. We know there's going to be some cuts involved with some of those folks. We're in the process of trying to determine what our needs are going to be. And quite frankly, with the, with, with everything that's going on, we have no idea what our year is going to look like, what we start. So we have no idea how many people we're actually going to need.
Thank you. Any questions? Hearing none. Mike, would you please proceed with Roll?
Lot?
Yes.
Miniger?
Yes.
Croft?
Yes.
Goffner?
Yep.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item. First of all, I also, I kind of, just kind of spaced for a second. Thank you all for the previous last thing other Mike's agenda. I appreciate that, and I appreciate the confidence that you have in me. I just sort of spaced. I was like thinking in board mode and not thinking about that, so. Thank you again. Next is the
Hey, Bob, just real quick, I didn't know, since Alex took the time to join us, did you want to, did you want to mention anything about Alex?
Alex, thank you for being with us, and yes, you're, yes, you're still with us.
Perfect.
Yeah, I forgot Alex was there because I don't have the grid up, so I, I can't see, so. Look at it, look at your screen, so. Next item is the adoption of the policies. We did a first reading of them last month, so I We did a first reading of them last month, so I would request a motion to approve those policies.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Jason. Mandy. Any discussions? Mike, would you please proceed with roll?
Goffner.
Yep.
Croft.
Yes.
Miniger.
Yes.
Lot.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, I would request a motion to approve the student handbooks. You should have received the pages of the items that have changed from a previous year.
Do I have a motion?
I'll sell move.
Linda.
I'll second.
Michelle. I was looking around on my grid. Any conversation? You know, I did not realize how long some of those handbooks are. I think my wife must have been the one that read through all of those. Mike, would you please proceed with roll?
Miniger.
Yes.
Lot.
Yes.
Goffner.
Yep.
Croft.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. And my final thing is the approval of the state testing. I would request a motion to approve that resolution.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mandy. Jason. Would you like to elaborate on what this is, Mr. Humble?
Yes, I didn't want to elaborate until we had the motions.
Thank you.
So basically what it is, is we're, we're changing, we have, since we've gone to online testing, we've done online for grades three, three through eight and even high school. But this year, we've been given the option to do, to split third grade. We can do paper pencil for the English Language Arts section, but still do online testing for the math. We feel it gives our kids a little better opportunity. There's so much typing involved in doing ELA at third grade. And many of the kids haven't had a chance to really get up to speed on that. And especially since we give the, the fall reading test very early in the school year. So we're gonna do paper pencil in the ELA part, but we, but we will still do the online for math. It's, I think it just gives us a better opportunity for, for our kids to show what they know.
Are there any questions? Mike, would you please proceed with roll?
Croft.
Yes.
Goffner.
Yep.
Miniger.
Yes.
Lot.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next up, we have a curriculum director's report.
Prior to that, if I might, I just want to make a comment that relates to the third grade ELA test with regard to the third grade reading guarantee. Because this year we do not have any state testing and state testing is, along with a couple other factors, affect our students being retained or not in the third grade. No students will be retained in the third grade this year per the third grade reading guarantee. So I just, in reference to the testing, I just wanted to, to share that as well.
Thank you.
So, yeah, you're welcome. So now back to the agenda, I'd like to make a motion to approve the presented personnel items pending proper certification and paperwork.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mandy. Linda. Any discussion? Mike, would you please proceed with roll?
Croft.
Yes.
Miniger.
Yes.
Goffner.
Yep.
Lot.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries. I guess actually I'm the one who jumped the gun, aren't I?
Now Alex is legit.
I forgot.
I know, I was like, I don't think I'm on yet, but. Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Next item is legislative report, Mandy.
Okay. Let me pull this up here. So the last governor activity that was kind of listed in the resources that I have was the documentation and that, that Governor Dwyane was reopening the childcare centers and day camps. And there were some guidance to help with that. So that's kind of something that I thought, you know, might be really good for us to kind of look at to see what, what kind of expectations they have for childcare and, and what maybe the future will hold if, if need be. So then there is the House passed House Bill 111 by a vote of 80 to 14, that just requires public and private schools to transmit a transferred student's records within five school days. And I, I believe that's kind of been standard to get it as soon as possible anyway. The Primary and Secondary Education Committee, they're continued, they revised and accepted a substitute version of House Bill 322, which was the teacher residency program. And there are some, some changes and they've put them side by side so you can see them on on their, on their documentation as far as what, what they've kind of submitted as the substitute version. They amended and passed House Bill 409, modifying student attendance requirements at certain e-scholes. And it clarifies the parents' communication with the e-school teachers as far as what qualifies for documentation and such. The House Criminal Justice Committee had a second hearing on House Bill 83. And this allowed images captured by camera on school buses to be used as corroborating evidence for offenses of failing to stop for school bus, school buses. And there was testimony that was very very thorough and very alarming to know how, how much they have from these school bus cameras as far as how, how people aren't necessarily following the, or they're failing, they are failing to stop. And they have all of that, but the cameras can be used. The committee passed House Bill 208, increasing the penalty for assault if the victim is acting as a sports official or if the assault is committed in retaliation for the victim's actions as a sports official. The committee amended Senate Bill 10, increasing the penalty for theft in office when the value or property of service is stolen is 150,000 or more. There is, going back, let me, I'm looking at my notes, I had the, all the bus information. That I believe is available. I'm gonna pass that on to Mike as far as to pass on to transportation in case they didn't see it. But it gave a survey that revealed their percentages of timing and, and when people potentially passed buses when they shouldn't have, which direction. So it had a lot of valuable information that might be something that they could use.
Here.
The House Ways and Means Committee, they passed House Bill 255 after accepting a substitute version of the bill requiring the state's tax expenditure report to include information on property tax exemptions. And looking here. And we've got the committee held a first hearing, the higher, the higher education committee heard a first hearing on Senate Bill 181, requiring the chancellor of higher education to create a template for workforce education partnership programs. And they have, the Senate General Government and Agency Review Committee held a first hearing on House Bill 308, providing workers compensation or disability retirement for peace officers, among others, who were diagnosed with post-traumatic stress disorder arriving, arising from employment without an accompanying physical injury. There was a second hearing on storm shelters being part of new, new school construction projects. That was Senate Bill 248. And then the three, the third grade reading guarantee, passing the resolution urging the General Assembly to waive the requirement that the state board increase the promotion score for the third grade English Language Arts Assessment for part of the third grade reading guarantee for the 2020, 2021 school year due to the pandemic. That is all.
Thank you, Mandy. Any questions? Next item is our UVCC report, Michelle.
Okay. After the opening, Mrs. Reeves, the board president, gave her report and she reminded all the board members that we would be receiving the superintendent and treasurer's evaluations electronically and that we should complete them as soon as possible. Dr. Lewis reported there were 14 revisions of board policy. And she gave a more detailed explanation of the policy dealing with emergency closings. And also further explained the family and medical leave policy. She did send a letter to all the students encouraging them to finish strong. She instructed her staff to touch base with any students who weren't on track. And she has been in communication with area superintendents and OSBA discussing the present situation and how to plan for the future. Mr. Gibson, who is the director of operations, reported on the new procedures that'll be implemented in the fall, such as sanitizing wipes in all classrooms. He also explained the new summer schedules for the custodians. Mr. Fraley, the treasurer, gave his report. The general fund, he stated that the tax collection had wrapped up and UVCC has collected 2.1 million more than in fiscal year 2019. This is primarily due to the passing of the new levy. He's waiting on the remaining homestead and roll back reimbursement payments from the state. In the adult ed fund, UVCC received CTX dollars of 65,217 dollars and 39 cents to be used for customized training. This money is part of the state aid for adult ed. Then the board approved some donations and textbook purchases. The board authorized Mr. Gibson to advertise for bids for the replacement of the current high school clock and public address system. Finally, the board approved resolutions regarding distance learning evaluations, a community reinvestment area agreement with the Village of Jackson Center, service agreements, articulated employment and supplemental contracts, and a resolution of commendation for service award recipients. Then we went into executive session.
Thank you, Michelle. Any questions? Okay, the next item would be executive session, but I know of no reason we should go into executive session, is there any? Then the next item is I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll sell move.
Linda and Jason. Any conversation or questions? Mike, would you proceed with roll?
Miniger.
Yes.
Goffner.
Yep.
Lot.
Yes.
Croft.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
So that's the end of our meeting. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Bye.